Okay. Let's get started and then share the recording for anyone that's missed it.
Everyone, sorry, a few minutes late.
That Carl?
Yeah.
There you are. Hey Carl.
Hey, it's gone.
I just need to step away for a quick second, but you know, I'll be right back.
Okay. So David, do you want to start going over the documents that you guys prepared? If we can just start the conversation on that, you, you want to share a screen maybe?
Yeah, I can share that with you. That's just a draft document. Obviously, our board of trustees meeting is on Monday night. I'm gonna actually mute everyone for a real quick second. It's a document that it's, it's prepared. I'll share it with you. And it kind of outlines the outdoor seating. There's also another document that's kind of an intro letter just asking, can you guys see that? I muted everyone, so I can't hear you.
Yes, we can.
Yeah. So it just kind of outlines what we're looking for when it comes to outdoor seating. We're just asking you to kind of put a map together if there's a tent, a lot of information on the tent because some of that needs to go to the building department and the fire department about egress information, hours of operation, proposed lighting, and just some general rules that we were probably going to want to institute. Everything has to follow any all New York State guidelines. I know that there was about 13 page document that came out not too long ago. I didn't get through the whole thing, but it kind of outlines a lot of the outdoor seating and the indoor, you know, what you have to do with staff and things like that. No outdoor entertainment. If it's private property, we're going to need consent, insurance liabilities and things like that. So that's just kind of an outline there. I spoke to a couple of people already that wanted to do this, to start getting their thoughts together in regards to kind of just email me this information. I'll go through this, share it with the boards. We'll come up with a plan to get you guys started on this. If there's, I know that's kind of one of the big topics is the outdoor seating. If there's anything other else from other types of businesses, we have an introductory introductory letter that we're going to put out. We're willing to hear all your ideas and try to assist you.
So David, just curious, how many businesses have reached out so far individually?
So prior to last week, I've had one business talk about the outdoor seating and then another business did email us yesterday, late last night or today about some potentially doing some stuff in our parks, which we definitely have to talk about because they're closed right now and some things like that. So.
Okay. Not too many.
Yeah.
And it seems like, I mean, I've spoken to a few who just talked about their plans for being, you know, providing safety rules and policies within the restaurant. So maybe skipping tables, putting up partitions, that they're already sort of seem like people are thinking about it. I just wonder if there's anyone that is not really sure where to start that we should know about, so that the village maybe and the, and the chamber could help at least point them in the right direction.
We're not at their, that phase yet though. Can they, they can't have anybody inside for dining, can they?
No, we're not at that phase, but we want to prepare for that phase. We don't want to wait until they tell us you're ready and then people have to figure it out. So we're trying to be very proactive so that they can start to plan and purchase what they need and make the, you know, make the necessary arrangements.
So I've uploaded to the Chamber website. There's a template for the plan that they're supposed to be putting together prior to reopening that they can follow or just use as a guideline. So that's uploaded already onto the site. And then there's also from the, I believe the Restaurant Association, I went on their site or some other site, I forget which one. And there was a list of other guidelines for specifically for restaurants. Follows, so I've included those resources on our website as well.
Yeah, so you have a lot of resources for them on the Chamber website, really, you do.
Now, I think we need to just work on communicating this to everyone and drive traffic to our website because there are, there are the resources. The thing is, are people aware that they're there? And do they know how to use these resources? Do, you know, do they need extra help, like you just said? So it would be helpful to know so we can provide assistance. Or maybe just, you know, starting of putting together webinars or Zoom session that helps.
So I know you shared a webinar with the businesses the last time. Did people attend that? Was it well attended?
I do not know, because I, I get this information from the county, from Sherry. Which I am sure you guys know. And I'm pretty much just forwarding all the stuff that I receive from them. I'm posting things on social media and I'm posting things on our website. And I'm also sending out emails to our entire membership. But then from there, I don't really, you know, I don't get any responses or people reaching out or people asking for help. So I don't know.
Yeah, I wonder if we should put like a flyer together for the businesses that we could just physically drop off for those people who aren't either as part of the chamber or are not on, on, you know, email. I don't know that there are that many, but maybe that would help.
I think that's a great idea. I think that, you know, maybe if from a Chambers standpoint, maybe we've touched a lot of these, these restaurants, bars operations in the past. And maybe they didn't engage with us then, but obviously these are different times. So I think that's a great idea if we just kind of, I will volunteer to be one of these people to do it.
Yeah, I'll volunteer.
Right there, just walk right down and slide under the door and maybe they come, maybe they don't, but chances are they.
There are a few, a few of the businesses that are not part of the chamber. When I just, you know, asked how they were feeling, they were like, oh, I'd like to be a part of it. So this seems like there's a little more interest because they realize that there's a gap for them. They don't, they're not getting information that they think they need. So maybe part of that flyer gives them that information. You can go to the, to the website. Here's the website. This is what, you know, and then that way they can see what the costs are and all that. They were asking me that, those kind of questions.
Are you talking about a flyer? I just want to make sure I understand correctly. Are you talking about a flyer that's communicating what's going on right now here or a flyer about the chamber?
No, a flyer of what's going on here and then saying, if you're interested in joining the chamber, like one little thing at the bottom, here, go here and you can join and get more information.
Okay, got it.
Sort of, sort of a dual purpose, not information on the chamber necessarily, but directing them to where they can get the information.
Just a couple of points there.
Just a couple of points, how the chamber can help you. Maybe two or three bullets. If you're interested in, you know, becoming a member. I think that would probably maybe draw some people. Now, they realize that they're sort of out there alone.
David, this phase two reopening of the restaurants, is it only for outdoor seating?
Again, that just came out very recently, but I, what I saw in that document is just outdoor seating. But it did start to talk about when it, like some of the indoor seating, it seems. So I think it'll help restaurants prepare for when indoor seating is going to be allowed.
Well, next week's supposed, believe it, ironically, this morning I saw next week's weather forecast and it looks really good. So good way to start.
I think a lot of people are going to be excited.
Oh, you bet. Oh, you bet.
Has there been any discussion about like closing the roads for a temporary time? And I know, I think Chris mentioned that last time that they did that up in Connecticut. Is that kind of in consideration?
Hmm, something, alright, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, maybe I was thinking it's something that we could talk about at our work session tomorrow.
Right.
You know?
Years ago, we used to close down Main Street. Actually, this is way before I was even on the board. It was some, Camille, you probably could refresh my memory on this, where it was sort of like a gigantic joint effort of civic groups, the police department, the local businesses, and we shut down Main Street. We had rides, you know, everything that you can imagine on Main Street.
Yes, they called it Tuckahoe Day. They called it Tuckahoe Day and they closed Main Street and they had everything from Main Street down to the depot.
Right, right. And we used to do that, or you guys used to do that in August.
Um, I remember sitting out there and it was very hot, so it could have been August.
Oh, yeah.
We needed an umbrella.
I don't ever remember it raining on those days, never.
But I'm sorry, can you just give clarification to what you're, what you're suggesting? Would the street closures be permanent? In other words,
No.
Next month, would there be certain sections where they could put tables out that would just stay there? Or are you talking about a one day festival?
What I was mentioning was that I think Chris from the Tap House said in Connecticut somewhere that they closed one road from like 4:00 PM or 5:00 PM until 8:00 PM or something. I don't know exactly the times, but just for that block of time that some restaurants can then, you know, extend out to have a little increased occupancy with social distancing for like the dinnertime is what I'm imagining and then wrap it up and open it back up.
Yeah, David, I think Tarrytown did that as well.
Yeah, so Chris was definitely, he was talking about rye a little bit. So if you know kind of the layout of rye is they have Purchase Street there. All the restaurants are right on Purchase Street, basically. So it's really easy for them to kind of put tables out and how their roads and parking lots are kind of coordinated, they just go right around. If we're looking to close roads, it's going to be kind of almost a, pretty much a nightmare. And I don't know how many restaurants it's really going to assist at that point.
And then also all the other ones that want to participate, but we're not closing down their roads.
Exactly.
That's considered as well.
What about giving consideration instead of closing the street? So I'm thinking in terms of Main Street right now, that, that Mexican restaurant that's right on Main Street. I'm sorry, I can't remember.
Burrito Poblanas?
So let's just say right next door to him is something that would not typically be open during dinner hours. Would he be able to maybe put his tables in front of that storefront? It's, this would be in low, you know, to prevent street closures, maybe allowing the restaurants to expand, you know, further before outside of their storefront, if you understand what I'm trying to say.
I mean, I'm not the expert on this, but correct me if I'm wrong, if we take up the whole sidewalk for for tables and chairs, then we need where the people are going to be walking by, keeping distance from those tables and chairs as well as, you know, it's on the two pager, but you know, emergency egress and access for fire department and police department, et cetera.
And wheelchairs, we have to.
And I think in order to do the sidewalks, say, in the case of Burrito, then we would have to eliminate street parking in that specific area just to allow for people to walk by and maintain social distancing. That would be the only way around it.
Okay. I'm just trying to think out of the box.
Listen, that's what we all have to do right now.
Tucked away has the same problem. They have a very narrow sidewalk by Tucked Away. They would have the same issue at Burrito.
So I mean, as long as the business owner, I mean, for argument's sake, let's say this, this idea doesn't make its way to approval. Then that, then obviously that restaurant owner will have to understand that his patrons will not be able to park in front of the restaurant and might have to walk or look elsewhere to find parking. That's, you know, it's just something that to point out to that, to that particular proprietor, if that's what they would like to do.
It might, it might still be an appealing trade off.
Oh, I, I no doubt about it. I just want, I just want the owner, you know, the proprietors to be aware of that. That's all.
Right.
They can walk up their dinner then.
That's right. And also it justifies you having an extra piece of cake or, or what have you. Or an extra appetizer.
I was looking for a good excuse for that.
Okay, yeah, that, you're absolutely right, Theresa. They, Mama Santa, I believe, has that right by, through their site plan approval, the outdoor seating. Well, that might be.
Correct. Spice Village as well, right?
I don't know specifically, specifically if Spice Village has, is that part of their site plan as well? We'd have to take a look at that unless someone knows off the top of their head that they have that outdoor seating.
No idea, but I think at this point, if it's in that courtyard area, that's up to the owner down there to provide their space for, for all their restaurants down there.
Yeah, and we, and we have that owner right here on, on the, on the Zoom with us, so.
Right.
I was also thinking about Roma's and how they have that beautiful parking lot. And wouldn't it be nice if they just put all their tables and chairs out in the parking lot? I don't know, maybe the, the community center's parking lot for their patrons, but you know, would we allow something like that?
That's what we're, yeah, that's definitely what we're talking about with that kind of outline. If they want to do something like that, they just kind of bring it to us, how they're going to keep, where they're going to kind of put their tables, how they're going to keep people out of the parking lot, you know, just so traffic doesn't drive in there. Absolutely. I think, you know, if a business has their own parking lot, that is definitely something that we're interested in, or they should be interested in. I think we'd be very interested in helping them with that.
So maybe in this flyer that we're talking about distributing, maybe we should indicate that they really need to step up and present their plan?
Yeah. Absolutely. I mean, the way it stands right now, they're, they can hit the ground running next Tuesday. Next Tuesday is when they can start outdoor seating. So yeah, it's most imperative that we, that we get some of these ideas or plans submissions from, from the proprietors here, the restaurants.
Right. And Angelina spoke with you a little bit as well, man.
Yeah, Angelina's, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Same thing. He's going to utilize this parking lot. He's going to allow, I think Lou's on the line or he's in the room, so I'd rather have Lou tell his side.
Well, what I plan on doing is putting up a tent closest to the building, get about nine to 12 tables under that. And I might possibly add some more tables up on the top end of the parking lot next to the building, next to me, under umbrellas. So that's where I've gotten so far.
Okay.
And correct me if I'm wrong, this is going to be more of a case by case, right? Every, every owner proprietor is going to submit to you their plan. So just so we're not, you know, from a chamber or does people, you know, we're not speculating saying, oh, there's going to be a day where it's like sidewalk restaurant day. We not, don't wait for that. Submit your proposal to throw your seats on the sidewalk, get going first. Is it, what should we, I mean, is there, I'm sorry, oh, actually, no, it's the two pager that you sent. That's what they should be submitting in, right?
Yeah. And again, once that comes in, we're definitely going to have a conversation with them and talk it out and make sure that we all have a comfortability level with some of this stuff. Like again, the Tap House has contacted me a few times and they've had a couple of alternate ideas and there's definitely some safety issues that we need to discuss and kind of go through. But again, I'm here, the fire department will contact them, building department, police will, will figure it out.
Alright, that's easy enough.
Maybe if we're targeting restaurants specifically, maybe, because some of them are not even in their space, like the Tap House, for example. I don't know that, that Chris has been in his space. Um, maybe we're better off just calling and saying, look, you know, this is what's happening. You know, maybe we, we come up with a list of restaurants in the area and we just call each one, if that's what we're targeting.
Dave, I think Chris definitely knows what's going on.
Yeah, I think that goes back to the flyer where we talked about where if the businesses aren't on here, and most of them are, most of them you guys have reached out to, it's the flyers where, yes.
No, no. What I'm saying is in lieu of the flyer, it might be easier to just make a phone call. That's what I'm suggesting.
I think you probably have to do multiple ways of reaching out to them.
Yeah, definitely.
Omira, you're muted.
Everybody.
I think the flyer is helpful because it gives people something that they can refer to. And it helps give guidelines so that we don't have to keep repeating what people need to do. So I think both are good though. Not that many businesses, if we wanted to make phone calls, I think that's a really good idea. Because sometimes the flyers just go get in the garbage.
Right. They might not realize what it is.
Yeah.
I know. Yeah, too, because people are watching and they're seeing things and they will share. I've seen that happen on Instagram a lot. So I think definitely, once the flyer is created, the final approved communication, we should definitely, you know, be reaching out via social media platforms.
One of the things we can do with the flyer is, is that as this, as things open up, so next week, so say, you know, Louis has got his thing going on and Angelina's. Like I can run out, take pictures at these different places and then on social, different social channels, we can put the picture of the restaurant, but also include that flyer as well. So it's a post about Angelina's and a couple of other restaurants, not with 20 million pictures, but separate posts. And share it on the different groups like East Chester for the community, East Chester Community, the Moms and all that stuff can be on the Chambers page and emanate from there, which I think would be, would be good. And then we can do what Omira says and whatnot, but sharing it on those mom groups and those community groups will be very viral. They're so, they're, they'll share the heck out of it once they see that these places are open. Even though you think they would know that it's phase two, everyone's crazy. So to be able to put it in their face will be beneficial with the flyer as well attached to that post as backup information.
Lou, do you have a timeframe for when you'll be up, or have this plan put together or that you would be able to put everything in place?
Well, I thought I had it until the 23rd, but Omar came out with something today saying that we can go ahead with phase two.
Right.
But he didn't say if it's, if it's the first day of phase two. So I, but it looks like it's going to be one day towards the middle to the end of next week. So I'm going to work on it tomorrow and try and do everything I got to do.
Yeah, phase two, it's going to start next Tuesday, Lou.
It'd start next Tuesday, but I was preparing for phase three. I'm not complaining about it, you know, it's just, I gotta start working on it tomorrow.
I know, I know.
I, I, I spoke to a rental place and, and so I, I plan on being ready to go by Tuesday, Wednesday.
Alright, if you have a problem with the tent, I have somebody that I can refer to you.
Okay.
That I used to work with up at the county.
Good, okay, I'll keep that in mind.
Alright.
Boo. Now, are you taking reservations? Like how is this going to work?
Well, it would be reservations, but I'll, I'll try to have, always have tables available for walk-ins, but reservations always help.
Can I make mine now, Lou?
Well, you want to make yours right now?
And then the servers will be wearing masks? Like how are you planning on doing?
They'll be wearing masks. I read that in the guideline today.
Yeah.
The, the patrons have to wear a mask until they sit down at the table, then they can take a walk.
Right.
Basically, it was very vague. There wasn't much else in there. Keep the table six feet apart, but there really wasn't much else.
No.
I'm assuming they're able to come inside and use the restrooms, but I'm not definite about that.
Now, in Connecticut, you can use the restroom, but when you walk in, when the patron walks in, the restaurant, they have to put their mask on. That's in Connecticut.
That makes sense that they should be that way here. Whenever they leave their table, they should put the mask on. Like I said, I'll try to get more information, but I just don't know who to, you know, who to get it from to get a concrete answer to all these issues.
You know, Chris might know because he, he has other restaurants and he's been opened in Connecticut, I believe.
Okay.
So he might be able to guide you on that.
Okay, that's, that's good.
That's all I heard of.
Well, we have, we have a conference call with the county tomorrow, so hopefully we're going to get more information tomorrow. I'm sure that's going to be a hot topic tomorrow.
Right.
And I know he had stated that the zones that were in phase two already can start as early as tomorrow.
Yeah.
Outside seating. So that could be a guideline too, as to what they're doing a little further up the line.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, this just changed like in the blink of an eye.
Yes. Well, they were putting pressure on them as of last week, that, you know, to move to this stage because it's tough on a lot of people.
And how about hair salons? They open as well next week.
Yes.
Well, I'm going to be the first one in line for that, if you can look at me now.
So we don't have anybody on here that has a hair salon? You made your appointment? Yeah, because they have certain guidelines to follow as well.
I know those are by reservation, appointment only. That has to be by appointment only, and I take them walk-ins.
You can't get air blew dry.
Restaurant's going to be by appointment only as well or no? It'll be walk-in just like before?
Well, for restaurants, I mean.
Reservation, I mean, not appointment, reservation.
Well, I, I'm going to take reservations and hopefully have, you know, some flexibility, but once I fill up there's only going to be nine tables, nine to 12 tables out there. So I don't know how much flexibility I'll have for walking.
That's right. Well, this was an idea that was published in the New York Times a few months ago, a few weeks ago. Some restaurants are using mannequins. Would you like to do that?
Mannequins?
It sounds like a joke, but it's true. That's what they did. They put some mannequins in the empty tables. It wouldn't look empty.
Hopefully, I don't have that problem.
But.
Yeah, I hope not, though. I don't think you will. I think Mayor and Diane will be first customers.
Do you know, more serious, on a more serious note, there was a restaurant that is taking reservations over the phone and at the same time you order your meal. Then when you arrive at the restaurant, your meal will be at the table or it'll be ready for you.
Yeah, that was another thing.
But to me, that's a little stark. I mean, to me, it sort of takes away achieve, I would think, by going out to a restaurant. And there's only going to be like two utensils on the table. And not too much bread. Yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, and, and the, and the server's only going to come over to the table one time during the course of your meal. So it, it was a little, but this is what one particular restaurant is doing in one of the articles that I had read last week. And I'm not suggesting.
I think that's a good idea, you know, because you're going to have less traffic possibly because you don't have as much seating. So that's what helps expedite, get people in.
And, and get them out, right.
Yeah, you're not going to have the same dining experience that you would normally have. That's a good idea, actually.
What if you write the menu on a, like a whiteboard and just your server brings it to each table? They don't touch the menu, but they could read off of it.
Well, see, or like Carmine's, they just post the menu on the wall.
Well, I was, I was going to definitely do printed menus to hand out, and we could do something with specials on a board like that. I'll look into that.
Printed menus, do you have to throw them out after each?
Ones that I can throw away, throwaway menus.
Yeah.
You could have menus that you, you fix, that are affixed to the table so that they, they're not touching them, they're just looking at them.
Oh, yeah.
Underneath.
Like underneath so that they don't, they're not touched.
Yeah, it's a table decoration, so you kill two birds with one stone.
You don't have to throw out, oh, you're wasting.
Right. If you have the label, you don't have to have a clear tablecloth instead of a white tablecloth.
Or everyone's has phones these days. I mean, I don't know if you can do one of those barcodes that they scan it when they walk in and boom, the menu pops right up on their phone.
That's good. They had it in Connecticut, Carl. They had that in Connecticut.
That's the idea.
I've never set that up. I'm assuming it's fairly easy.
So I'm just wondering about a restaurant like Chow's that has an outside seating area, but you've got to go through the restaurant to get to it. What?
As long as you have your mask while you're walking through. You know, anytime you're walking through the natural, I would imagine what you're wearing your mask.
Right.
Sit down, you're amongst your folks, so probably get away with it.
And, and what about the bars? So, um, can, can the, can the bars start to? And what about the bars? So can the, can the bars start to, you know, entertain?
Not indoors, but if they have an outdoor area in that guideline, that talks about some outdoor areas that you can be at, if you have an outdoor bar, but I'm not sure if anyone does. I don't know.
So if you're a bar, you cannot have tables? Let's say you're a bar that serves food, can you have tables outside?
Again, I was just, I just skimmed the guidelines real quick today, so I'm not, not sure.
But the moral of the story is, submit and app.
That's it.
Well, again, if you have your own outdoor space, I think that that's completely on you. We're talking about anything that you can assist with.
Dave, question about yoga students out to me today. On the call, I don't think there's anybody on the call from, oh my God, got their name.
Yoga Life.
Yeah. So they're asking if it would be possible to do yoga outdoors. I don't know exactly where. I don't know if they have a place in my park.
Right, so we did get that. The mayor and I got an email. I thought it was Yoga Haven, maybe it was Yoga Life. Just the complications with that right now is that our parks are closed. So when they do open, we have to have a conversation. I have that conversation with the board is that if they do open, are we going to now be scheduling businesses to use our parks at certain times? When it comes to like the Bronx River Park, I mean, that's a perfect spot to bring 10 people down and conduct a, conduct a class.
But do you need a park to do that?
I can tell you, if you bring 10 people down there and you guys are socially distanced and you're running a class, I am not sure who's going to bother you, to be quite honest with you.
Okay.
I was, Karina, I was telling you, there's a lady before the virus. She has a class that she starts in the park right by one of those benches as soon as we come into the park. And then what she does is the training session takes that group around the lake.
Okay. I mean, I've seen people, yeah, doing that, a large group. Let's say you have like 20 people. Is that like, is that?
She probably has, I would say, usually about 10 people, seven to 10 people in her group. And, you know, they have their little weights and they're doing all these various exercises as they walk around the park. And then when they get to a park bench, that's when they'll take a rest, maybe do another exercise, and then they continue on their way.
Okay. So would it be okay if I suggested this to them? I mean, it's nowhere near her place, but it works.
Yeah, most definitely.
Yeah, I would suggest that you keep the classes to 10 or less people. I mean, the New York State still has that restriction out right now, so it just looks better that way as well.
And the parks are still closed.
And the parks are still closed.
Ours are, yes.
Yeah, well, now this is really going to amp up that conversation, which we'll probably have in tomorrow's work session. Now that we're getting into this phase two earlier than expected. Well, no, we're not getting to phase two early, but some of the moving up.
Connecticut increased their limit of a group of people that can congregate from five to 25 as of June 1st.
Oh, okay.
Today's June 30th. Where, sorry, where was that, Paul?
In Connecticut.
Connecticut?
Oh.
But you still have to maintain six feet, you know, distance with each other, but they allow up to 25 people to congregate.
All right.
So are we going to get the flyer put together, David, or?
I heard somebody else was volunteering that.
Or Karina.
I can, I volunteer. My marketing skills are pretty good.
Yes, yes.
I'm confident in saying that. And I think Carl and Loretta, they volunteered to actually like either call or hand it out and visit the businesses and, I guess, distribute the flyer.
And if you need help, I'm sure, you know, the board member will help also.
Yeah.
I'll put, yeah, no. Out to everybody so we can all review it.
Right.
Out and we can.
How are we getting copies made? I can't hear what you're saying, Karina.
We're talking about the flyer, so once it's finalized, approved by everyone, we can have it, we can design it for social media with different specs, right? And then we design it for printing as well.
I understand that, but once it's designed for printing, who will make the copies? Who will actually print?
Who's going to print it out?
The flyer.
Do, I mean, we don't have, the chamber doesn't have industrial printer, so we would have to, if we do it ourselves, we have to send it out and somewhere to staple.
Do you anticipate printing?
I didn't hear the question. Was it?
How, how many? 40 copies? I mean, how many?
Well, again, I have to ask, are we just talking about the restaurants? Are we speaking about all of the businesses?
Well, probably most of the other businesses are like opened, right?
I think we're talking primarily restaurants and.
Yeah, so then we, what, we only need enough for the East Chester Tocco, really.
So not really East either, because this is this village, Tocco Village. East Chester's different. It's a different jurisdiction.
Oh, well, then if it's just Tocco, that's easy.
Yeah. I don't think we're going to approve any East Chester plans, right?
Of course, that's right. I'm sorry. Yes.
Yeah, we can just go to, if it's whatever, if we can print it here, or I can just go to Staples or something, you know, printing it. It's not a big deal. I can, you know, I can do it. Give it to me. I'll get it printed and I'll just, whatever it is, 30, 20, 30, I don't know, whatever it is, it's fine. And then this, this motivates, East Chester, and I don't know, Bronx is doing stuff, but this maybe will motivate East Chester as well, because they've got to start getting on this, too.
So it sounds like we have a plan?
Yeah. So David, you said this is a draft.
Yeah, it's a draft. So what we're going to do is we're going to put something on the agenda for Monday night from the Village Board. What we'll do is we're going to waive some fees for the Sidewalk Cafe, where I'm going to propose it to the board, and I'm sure they'll do it, and kind of put some language to allow the board to give myself and some of the other employees here some leeway into approving these things without having to go back to them. But yeah, well, it's a draft, but that's pretty much what it's going to be.
Okay. All right. So then based on that, I'll just start designing the flyer.
Yeah.
And David, with that being said, can any of the restaurant owners that are on now this call, can we get that, that draft to them, or at least give them something so they could start, you know, formalizing what they're going to do?
Yep, I already have one person. They're going to give me a call tomorrow. I'll go over it. And again, my office number, you guys can have that, 813-9482. That can go out there. I'm happy to talk to any of the restaurants.
Okay.
You missed last words there, David.
No.
The phone never stops anyway, so.
Is Lois the only restaurant on this call? I don't see anyone else. Okay.
I already gave him my number, so he's going to call me tomorrow.
Yeah, I hope Broken Bow knows about what's happening with this, with this new phase two reopening business, so I'm sure she's heard about it one way or another.
Sure they know.
I will volunteer to walk over there for them.
Is that a kill two birds with one stone one?
It can be.
What about Growlers? Have you heard from them?
I don't even know, is, was, is Growlers even open prior to this? I know they were going through a change of ownership at one point, so.
I haven't been there in ages. I don't know.
What about Max, like Max Truck, the meatball guys that are based in Tocco? What, David, like with trucks, I mean, they're a Tocco business. A lot of these trucks aren't, but they are. So is there going to be anything special for that, or like they could probably do what they were going to do with the Broken Bow?
Uh, yeah, outside, in their parking lot? Yeah, Broken Bow has a site plan to allow food trucks, so I would think that's exactly where they would go.
Nice.
They don't even have to come to the board with that. That's right.
No, nope.
Yeah, that's ready to go, so they don't even.
That's all ready to go.
Okay.
You can roll that out Tuesday.
Okay.
And what about the parking lot for Growlers? Would that be available at any point, like if wanted to do like Saturday and Sundays, like food truck day? At any given, you know, timeframe within the day, would we be able to do something like that and utilize the parking lot?
So that's a loaded question. I don't speak for the board, but there's always been kind of a thought process is that that's promoting food trucks that may or may not be Tocco businesses, right?
Yeah. I think we should promote our businesses, our local restaurants. That's my opinion, before we get outside food trucks in.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I agree.
Yep. I think Max is the only one that's local.
Yep.
So we want to do it with them, but.
Or maybe Chimeli. Chimeli's also a local guy. I mean, he's not a Tocco guy, but I think he's in East Chester.
Okay.
But I know Jean is, what is it? Jean is, what is it? Zepley, she's not from Tocco, that's for sure. That truck that comes up here.
Not my truck.
You might want to make.
We need a Zepley truck from Tocco, so let's get on it.
Get on it.
It might be fat-free and air freshener.
Yeah, nobody wants fat-free anything. They want extra fat.
So does it make sense to try to put this flyer together and maybe start to raise awareness? I mean, starting Friday, this weekend?
Karina, could you have it done by Friday, or is that too short?
No. Fine, I'll work on it tomorrow. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just not sure. I'm trying to think of the timeline on, because if it's early next week that they can start, obviously, we want them to be educated on it prior to, so that they can.
A little bit of work this weekend and Monday.
Yeah, and the weekend's a great opportunity to go for a walk and knock on some doors.
Yep, and eat.
And drink.
And drink. All right, so it sounds like we have a plan.
Karina, if you have them ready Friday, if you send it to me, the email, I can get copies out of my office. This way, Mike doesn't have to go pay for them.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then just, you know, how you want me to just.
Hey, who's that?
Loretta, whatever, and I'd be happy to help you get them out as well.
Carol, want to introduce yourself? I think there, someone's asking who you are.
I'm a mess. I am. I'm sorry, hold on. I'm sorry. I'm on the board and I publish a local community, villages, different areas in Westchester called the Town Planner.
Nice to meet you.
Nice, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for joining us.
Okay, is there, if there's nothing else?
I think, good.
We're good.
I'll try to send something to you by the end of tomorrow.
Okay. That'd be great.
It is ready to go. If we need to make it.
And just let me know how many I should print. At least like 30, right?
Yeah, not, I don't think more than that, which is still in Tocco. It's not more than that.
Well, you know, the Telly, oh, the Telly's different, right? You want restaurants.
Yeah. And once, the ones we posted on social media, you could all, and if you can share within your social media pages, I think that'll be helpful. Post it on the, also on the Village website or Facebook as well. And try to get as many people as we can.
And on my Town Planner, I'll do that as well.
Okay, perfect.
Great.
That's good. Thank you all.
Right.
Look forward to seeing you guys.
All right, sounds great. Looking forward to it.
Yeah, same. Bye-bye, good night, everybody.
Take care now. Bye-bye.
Have a good night, everyone.
Have a good night.